Call this Jackson County Commission Work Session for November 2nd. We have our roll call. District 1, Mr. Hedges. District 2, Mr. Benble.
Present.
District 3, Mrs. Miller. Present. And Mr. Edwards.
Present.
And Ms. Wilson. You have the floor and present. Have her indication by Mr. Porter. And her place.
God, our Father in heaven, as we enter into this time of Thanksgiving as a country, we are, we want to express our thanks to you for all the blessings that you provide us as citizens of this county and citizens of this nation, that we can have open and free elections. God, we're thankful for that privilege and that freedom. So, God, we pray that you'll continue to watch over us all. And we pray that we'll continue to have these freedoms and never take them for granted. And we're so thankful for those men and the women in the armed services that are helping preserve those freedoms on a daily basis. We pray that those are in harm's way, will come home safely to their families, rejoin a good life here in this country. So, God, we're thankful for the men that are gathered here today to make decisions about this county. We pray that the decisions they make will be good decisions for all the people of the county. Watch over us and save us. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have 12 items up here. Now, we have one thing for a quick discussion, the DBC over bridge project. We've been asked to, asked to do, have a vote on that, but let's discuss that since tonight is a work session. If there are any problems with that, any other changes before we proceed? Have a motion to approve the agenda with the items presented. And then a change?
Mm-hmm.
Both have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Those in no favor say nay. Okay. I don't think we've had anyone sign up. Did you have anything?
I've just, I've, I've just questioned them.
Okay. Um, so again, our discussion items, first one's the 26th day holidays. You have a list of 26 year holidays. It's about the time of year that we'll be voting for the last of the next year, so I ask if everyone would review this and take a vote for next.
Down at the bottom of the page, someone put in there, this needs to be changed at the holiday following December.
Uh, it will be observed on, if the holiday falls on a Saturday, observed on a Friday, and all of the time. Oh, I think that's considering they're closed on Fridays, but I think there's one holiday, two holidays, all of that. At this time, I'd say we approve it as is, you know, if we were.
Okay.
Any questions or comments on that? If there's objection, we'll place that on the agenda for next, uh, next meeting. Next item regarding retiree insurance is something we keep talking about, bring it up. And I want to clarify what we discussed last time. I think at one point we had discussed the possibility of saying any new hires. Uh, I don't think we've gotten anything written up on that yet, but did we want to pursue with saying no one from this point forward, at least new hires will receive that? We talked about a partial benefit for new hires and things like that. We need to do something, I think. So, what's, uh, what do we pursue with that?
The state, right before we all took office, had made some adjustments and created a tier two retirement. How will that affect our retirees?
You'll probably see fewer folks, anyone that's on a tier two, which would be anybody hired after 2013, I think, January 13. You can't start drawing your retirement until the age of 62 or whatever that retirement age would be. Now, someone could still retire after 25 years of service. So, if we offered a benefit and they retire, then we are on the hook for providing that benefit. So, again, you can always add benefits, but it's always, as we see, very difficult to take it away. So, I think for the time being, it might behoove us to do that for anyone hiring in at this point and consider maybe in the future, you know, if there's a possibility, we could look at putting that back. But for the time being, we need to kind of consider that as our future. It's an incredibly costly expense for us, and we know that the cost of insurance is only going to increase.
We need to start filling with the benefits. Of course, your phone of applicants is going to run, you know, once your wages are not, um, higher than we've got them now, and you start filling with those, I just want to make sure that nobody understands that we have to postpone the drop. I know it's expensive, but, you know.
It's an expense. If it were an expense, we could control, which we can if we take away, you know, how much of the benefit we give, but we can't do it at all if we don't put any controls on it. So, we either, I would, again, suggest we either put a control on it or we take it away for the time being for any new hires. And it's not going to affect, you know, obviously for the next 25 years, but, you know, if someone wanted to know about this 25 years ago, we'd be in a different situation.
I, I can't see how we leave it open-ended. I mean, I understand Mr. Lev's concern, but, you know, the way it is now, it's open-ended. Whatever the increase is, we have to absorb, and it's hurting us financially. And it's hurting the employees financially now because we're having to cut back in order to make ends meet, and they're losing hours. So, I can't see how we, how we can ignore it and not address it in some way.
There's two things about employee, you need to pay them now, pay them later. That, you know, they chose to keep the salaries low and, and put off for 25 years for paying them. And that's why half these people work, you know, if they can.
They offer a lot of other good benefits too.
You can both on it.
Well, we need to know what to vote on. If we don't have an idea of what we're going to pursue, we'll let it die. This is the very fourth session, we discussed it. So, if we don't have an idea going out of this, then I don't see a need to pursue it.
I would say at the very minimum, we pay no more than we pay for current employees' insurance.
For new?
For new hiring.
So, when they retire, 25 years, if you're paying $405 for insurance, then that's what the retiree gets? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And they have to pay the difference?
Don't pay any, any increases.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we can always.
But can you pay that out to the employee, or do they have to?
Have to.
They have to go, they have to stay in our system?
Yes.
Yeah. So, you know, you, if it's $800 the day, $405 just today, and they retire on Monday, it's $800. You know, they, they pay the difference?
Which, if you consider that, they won't be drawing retirement. Most likely, they will have other employment opportunities if they're going to take that. So, they would not be taking the county's insurance for free. They'll either take that other employer's insurance, or if it were there for them, they would, they would pay that $400.
So, you're saying, whatever the premium is when they retire, they know more than that after they retire?
Yes.
For current?
For, for new hires. Right. It doesn't affect anybody that's already working or anybody that's already retired.
For new hire.
Just for new hire.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, for new hires, when they retire from the county, as a county employee, continue to pay their health insurance, but the county will only be responsible for the premium that a, then current employee. That would include the difference between a current employee's premium and a retiree's premium.
Correct.
Okay. Does that sound like everybody's willing to consider, get that put together, and bring that to the work sessions to discuss further?
Do we still want to leave it at age 65?
Next.
Please, 62. You're talking about 62.
Is it 65?
The state goes to 62.
Or at 65 now?
I'm not a big fan of unfunded mandates. You know, if they stay on the program, then they're paying the additional.
Currently, though, the premium is.
We have to do something, understand that?
That's why we do 65. Because regardless, you'll have that as well, for the grant. And we would, I would.
Currently, that could change.
It's actually, it's till 65, or if you have, I think, even if you have, you have your, your, Blue Cross remains your secondary, I believe. So, we would want to leave it that way to where, because that would reduce the cost.
Say that again, now?
I know, Blue Cross remains your secondary, I believe, that will carry it until you're 65. I'm not sure if it's until, if, if something happens and you receive Medicare for any other reason, or Medicaid or something before 65, do we still cover that? I'll have to look at that. I know we have some folks, though, that are retired, receiving the benefit, but it's a reduced cost.
You get SSI before your social security disability prior to 65, but then it converts to regular social security at 65.
Okay. So, and that may be what, I do know, we would want to keep that in, though, because that does reduce the cost for anybody that falls under that. And we can look at the policy specifically. Any other comments? Well, we'll, if we could get something together for the next work session, then we'll, okay. That's incredibly long-term thinking, but again, if we don't do it, then someone's going to have a problem down the road, so we might as well tackle it now. Okay, next item's a court referral application. Do you all have any packets, information said about Department Corrections, Community Corrections, Minimum Standards? In pursuing the application, we talked about a couple of weeks ago at the work session. This is the list that I'd like to ask, that kind of pursue, ask that they provide for us as a kind of a means of that process. It includes a plan that should be approved by Department Corrections and several other items that we should have on file as stated, I think, by law. So, this is what, if there's no objection, this is what I'd like to ask them to present to us. We have to assemble the, do this, and then the commission can go through and review that. Now, does the commission have to actually approve the plans?
Yes, commission has to approve the plans.
Is this an addition to what they, the rules agreed on now?
Well.
Does it say they will provide a yearly audit budget to the commission?
Right. They've got, they've got several things. This is the start of the process. This is just starting the process to have them present us this information, and then, of course, we'll look at this and then go to the next step in requesting whatever further's necessary. But based on, we've just pulled this from Department Corrections, thought it was a good base or whatever to kind of start that process. Everybody okay with that? If you have any questions or comments or thoughts on that, contact myself and Mr. Porter and recommendations or whatever. There's a whole lot of information out there. I know this is confusing, but we'll try to get it all in order so that we've got our paper looking like. Okay, next item regarding the sanitation organizational chart. Mr. Robinson?
Yes. As of earlier this year, we have two positions that I would like for us to consider filling. One of them would be the route foreman supervisor to assist with the guys needing the shelf out there, the routes, timesheets, just the daily needs of running and having with manpower and taking care of everything organized. I have some job descriptions that we're getting written up for and wrote up. If y'all would like to have a copy of those, I could let you have a copy of those and look over those. But this position, since, since I moved up, would be available, and I would like for it to be in-house with solid waste. I've got some pretty good guys out there that would step up and could fill this position pretty well, I believe. The other position that we would have, are there any questions on that one there?
Let me make a quick comment. You have office shop where it says route foreman. There should be a box there under route foreman, you know, that says vacant or whatever. The office and shop, those are, those are not actually positions. It's positions under them. But where it says route foreman slash supervisor, that's the position he's proposing. So, for some reason, it didn't print out the little box or whatever.
And then the other position we have, and we've had this, we had one of our employees move to, to another position here in the courthouse, and we've had this available for a little while. It's going to be an assistant enforcement officer. I'd like to, we would do this one in-house and advertise also. He would be a person that's going to assist with our enforcement officer. Learn, they would be responsible for learning the office, the database for our co-op list that we need, we have to maintain very highly. And also to learn and be as a backup person for our enforcement officer now, in case in the future something happens that, he would be a backup person for our regular enforcement officer.
So, we have basically two new positions in regard to the route foreman, as you said, that you filled from within, and the possibility, of course, for someone moving up, they'd leave a vacant position. I think the recommendation right now would be to leave that open if we do move into the
Front end.
Front end.
What if you fill the assistant with in-house, then you're going to have two of these?
Are you planning to do the assistant in-house?
Well, we would accept applications. If that was to happen, if somebody qualified in-house and would want this right here, then we would just have to fill their position later, because I'm, I'm, I've got a minimal amount of man right now, like most everybody is. I would have to, if one of these other guys moved up, I would have to fill their position.
Any questions or comments on that? Do you have the job description with you, or can you email that to us?
I've got them with me, yes, sir. This one here would be for, this would be for the assistant enforcement officer. And then? Yes, sir. And then this one here would be for the route foreman supervisor.
Do we want to place this on the next work session or the meeting? I think we had a committee meeting two weeks ago. We just got there, right? All right. Any other questions or comments? Anything else, Mr. Robinson?
No, sir.
If there are no questions or comments or objections, we'll place that on the agenda for next Monday for the meeting. Next item regarding animal ordinance resolution that put together, this is based on our discussion at the previous work session. I want to explain that, Mr. Porter.
Sure. It just, it's basically a clarification by resolution, as discussed previously regarding the concerns that some of the commissioners have received from the citizens about their ability. They're afraid apparently that the ordinance somehow prohibits them from live trafficking animals, from taking other action, for dogs and other animals on their property, to capture them and then take them down control. This simply says that that is not the case. It doesn't affect their ability to do that at all.
Questions or comments?
Can you copy this?
Any questions or comments? Do we want to proceed with this on the next, agenda for next week? No objections, we'll place that on the agenda for Monday. Okay, next item regarding guardian dental. We've talked about this quite a bit at some of our meetings. Based on, I think, some of the discussions, some of the talks at the work session, and just looking at the processes really to do this thing, I think the best thing might be to hold off for a few months on this and kind of consider some of the effects. It is similar coverage to what we have, or the same coverage as what we have. It does save us a little bit of money, however, with a lot of the changes we've got going on, right now we're under the reduced hours, but with some of the changes we've got going on with the payroll, things like that, I think it's going to add an additional burden, which we saw did happen when we switched the vision, there was some issues and concerns there. So, if there's no objection, I think maybe for the time being, hold off and perhaps look again at this. May, I'm not sure if this has to be done by January. If so, we may look at it next year if that's the way we want to do it. But is there any opposition to kind of put it off on that for a few months? To have a little bit further understanding of it, or talk, talk with some other entities that do have this group? Is that enough?
That would be a good idea.
Okay. The, I do want to say the vision coverage, I think, I've got my glasses on today, but the process is pretty good. So, I think from that aspect, it's working out pretty well for the vision coverage we have. But I think on the front side, there's some concerns still for the dental, so we'll take a look at that and then try to get back with everybody's attitude.
Sounds good.
All right. Next item regarding travel and training reimbursement policy. You have a copy of possible change, or certification, change for the policy. We talked about this, I think, in a work session before, maybe in a budget meeting or something in the past. This is essentially the same, and Mr. Manning can come and maybe explain what all is included in this, if you want to, how long it, what this is.
Yes, sir. Basically, this, when we looked at some of the reimbursement forms being turned in, we needed to be a little more specific about the days that we covered, you know, while you're away. If, if you were going to a training session for the field you're in, and it's held at a specific hotel, and there are regular rates at that hotel, someone chooses to stay at a different place, this basically spells out that we reimburse the rate, the guaranteed rate at the hotel. And it does leave some room in there. Should the hotel be booked and nothing available, then it does leave some room in there for that. It kind of clears up the issue with meals, frame receipts, and clearly it means the receipt that shows the food items ordered, not the total, not just the total line, but the receipt itself. Mileage, again, we're staying with the federal per diem rate on mileage each year, so if it changes, we change it to match that. And we're talking about round trip mileage also. So, if we go here to Prattville for a class for two, three days, then it means just round trip, not while I'm down there and I'm going here and, you know, traveling around at night or whatever. It's, it's clearly states in the accounting manual that it's round trip mileage only, so this clarifies that. This basically is, gets everything summed up on one reimbursement form. At previous times, you know, we may have somebody turning in a form before they even went to the conference. We might have issues of different mileages being turned in for people going to the exact same location, just a few little loose ends like that, and we wanted to sew up and have a real concise way to reimburse for that. And auditors, you know, look for these items when they check.
I thought we talked about per diem.
I thought we did. Flap, per diem, meal. We did. We did talk about that, and in speaking with the auditors, if you go that route, you have to tax the person for that $75 a day.
I thought this was already our policy. Have we not adopted it?
We never adopted, we talked about one before, but we never actually adopted the policy.
This is what we went by.
It's essentially, but we don't really have anything in writing. And a couple of things on here, like you said, the itemized receipts, you know, this helps to enforce that. One big thing is the hotel that you stay at. You know, there's cases, again, where it may be $150 per night at the staying of the hotel, the hosting, but we've had situations where people have turned in for a much higher expense. So, and then also mentions a summary of the agenda for the conference that you went to, because again, knowing.
It shows the dates and the, you know, the timeframes and all for the training that you're receiving, so.
We could do the per diem if you wanted to, but I think that's going to put more, that's going to be more tedious for us.
Well, we asked the auditors after we had discussed that first, and they clearly said, if you do that route and don't require receipts, you have to tax the person for that money. And when we found out that, it looked like, no, we just do the receipts again, and that way we know what we're reimbursing for clearly, and it does the issue of trying to add that in as a taxable item for that employee that's going. When they can just turn the receipt in and get the reimbursement for the exact amount.
Questions or comments? Do we want to look at another work session for this or in the next meeting?
I said put it on the next meeting, do we?
Are there any other questions or comments or changes we can make? We'll place this, if no objection on Monday's meeting. Okay, next divide, next item, line of credit renewal with First Southern State Bank. Mr. Manning?
Yes, sir. It's time of year to renew the, the ongoing line of credit we maintain with them. We haven't used it, there's no fee, or keeping it open. We just have to re-sign for one more year to keep the line of credit open.
Any rate change?
No rate changes. Again, we have, we have not used it in the last couple of years, but it's just an option to just keep it open, should we need it, it would be there. But we discussed it a little bit earlier, and really don't see even using it, but this just, just keeps the option open should we need it.
Any objections to that? We'll need to vote on that, I guess, to continue doing that. So, we'll place that on the agenda next Monday, if there's no objection. Okay, the annual dues for the county, Mr. Manning?
Yeah. All of them should have copies of the items. Just wanted everybody to see those. I mean, those are budgeted, they are in the budget that was approved. But again, just wanted to bring copies to everyone to see.
Do this change annually?
These, you know, it's, it's down to the pennies. It changes a few, it's basically just about the exact same amount it was last year, the association dues, the, what on the APM RV, that was the same.
Which one is that? Is that the?
That's the one that's 3,000.
That's a sort of consideration, too.
As far as the, yeah, it was sick, it was 3,000 last year.
Okay.
And then the ACAA annual dues was the same amount last year, 6,953. The NACO was the same as last year. Gus got them all.
That's awesome. Any questions or comments on those?
The TARCAG went from 9988 last year to 9927 this year, so a small decrease.
Any comments? I'd like to place that on the agenda for next Monday as well. Okay, next item, well, actually, we don't need to place that on the agenda, do we? Unless there's any changes.
They were approved in the first, we just wanted a copy of those.
Okay, pick-up tracks for sanitation, Mr. Robinson?
Oh, yes, sir. I'd like to just point request. Yes, sir. I'd like to just point request for us to approve sending out bids for new trucks. Last year in July, or July of this year, we approved and awarded bids for pickup trucks for the sanitation department out there. But due to production being shut down prior to us awarding the bid, those trucks were unable to be gotten. So, at this point, we have rescinded those bids and pulled them back in, and would like to request to get the bid for, what we'll have to do this time around is two 2016 half-ton four-wheel-drive extended cabs. And that would be to replace the ones that we approved earlier this year. The regular cabs that we were wanting would not be in production until later this year, June, July, and down. So, very hard to come by. So, I'd like to request that we just rebid again and for two 2016, that one for half-ton extended cabs. Also, the money that we had for that last year, we would just go ahead and put it in our cash deposit. We also, this year, budgeted for some more money to do a F3 or 3/4 ton regular cab flatbed. I'd like to go ahead and just, if we could, send out bids for it and just get all the bids in, and then see where we're at, and we'll make sure it's there, which ones we want and what we're going to do.
Will the extended be more of a cost than where it was?
It's going to be, yes, sir, probably around $1,500 to $2,000 extra. But it's going to be a little bit higher from last year to this year anyway. So, until I can get bids back in, I don't, we won't have a price till we can send them out and get the bids back in.
Anybody's thoughts or questions, comments?
Get the prices.
So, we can, I don't think we have the votes to bid it out, so if you want to go ahead and start the process.
Get to, get that process, okay. I just want to make sure.
But you did say 3/4 ton flatbed.
3/4 ton.
But you made one ton flatbed, correct?
Well, a 3/4 ton would be five.
I don't think you can get a 3/4 ton flatbed. You know, you can probably get a 3/4 ton cabin chassis and put one on it. I don't think you can get one from the manufacturer.
Could we bid both?
For a 3/4 ton.
What do we want as a price?
10, 3/4 tons is going to be the same.
Got you, yeah.
You know, whatever, whatever you think you need.
We would just, what this truck's going to be useful for is going to be for recycling. And during the summer, we have, we pull a trailer, a large amount of metals in, also from recycling on the weekend, the community cleanup service. The 150s that we have are not heavy enough. They won't stop these trucks. The loads are so big that, you know, it's just dangerous. Also, our recycling program is growing so much. We're spending more time with a small trailer than we had a bigger truck where we could do the flatbed and get a little bit bigger trailer later on. We could make that a whole lot more functional and keep the cost down.
You can request a price, I guess, on both of them.
Okay, I'll get that.
Any questions or comments? Next item, surplus pickup at the park.
Just a '96 GMC pickup truck. Probably done Go Up Hills and see what we can get out of it.
Questions or comments on that? So, we'll place that on the agenda for next Monday. You can put just a note together for the information. Next item, the public works traffic strike. Your updated one shows $56,000, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I think you've got two sheets on there, so the updated one.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. Before you, the list, the updated list will have the amount you just spoke of, and the last entry will be county road 138, if that's the correct list. I want to present to you all the list of roads proposed to receive traffic strapping, traffic strapping and some pavement markers. You'll see that denoted under the column stripe. To the far right will be how we arrived at placing these roads on the list, whether it be citizen requests, commission requests, Board of Education work orders, newly paved, in-house paved roads, or the ALDOT inspection, where we look at our major and minor arterials, and are required to maintain those roads to a certain degree. So, that's how those roads landed on it. I want to give you a chance to make any additions or comments, or provide any additional projects in this list as you see fit. Part B of that will be how to decide going forward on funding. Looking at the past, it's, it appears that this has been funded through 116 sizable projects such as this. The other option I would offer is contract services line item in budget 111, which if we choose to go that route, we're looking at a significant overrun if we go there versus 116.
Is this item a overrun with this and the other items?
Sir?
Would this put it over just by itself?
This would be, no, sir. You have probably 30 cent remaining.
Questions or comments on this? If the public works committee could get together, I don't know if you've had the conversation yet, but take a look at it and have a recommendation of how it could be funded. Would 100 be able to supply any of the funds for this? Well, I know we've got a cash balance and a sizable portion of the cash balance is material. Even if it's split between a couple of funds, I think there may be an opportunity there too. The ALDOT ones, those are ones essentially that need to be done, right?
Yeah, that was a result of the county road inspections that we partnered with ALDOT to do the inspections with. And those particular projects showed up as a low grade as it related to the traffic strapping portion of that inspection. We're not in danger as far as the threshold of the maintained level of the roadway. Overall, these particular sections of road have low scores in the traffic strip section. That's the higher ADT routes, all those that receive that inspection.
Any questions or comments? Do you think you'll be able to recommend by next Monday? We'll place that on the agenda for Monday as well. Okay, last item regarding the D-Color Bridge project. This, we discussed this previous work session, and there wasn't any push to put this on the vote by the commission. It's been requested by the friends, friends of the bridge and the organizations that are supporting this project to vote on it. I think they're supposed to make a decision, the state's supposed to be making a decision pretty soon, or have they already?
I received word today that HRI will give, try to hold off until the ninth to sign any contracts to give a chance to, or vote.
So, if we, again, if we'd like to put this up for a vote Monday, my understanding is that there's not been, based on the information we received, which they did offer to put in the last proposal they presented to us, I think, roughly a million dollars back to help in deconstruction of the bridges, to help with the liability on the county side. They had several different items in that proposal, including trying to limit our liability if we were to take it over. However, we would be the ultimate responsible party for it. But based on that information, how do we want to, at least go ahead and put a vote up next week for this, how we want to proceed?
Put it on the agenda.
Any questions or comments? Anything you need to gather information, we need to gather before Monday, further information. So, we'll place that on the agenda for Monday and see where we go. And essentially, we'll place that as a motion to support or to take the responsibility for that, or enter into agreement, I guess, with the, what's the name of the organization? Friends for D-Color?
Cobra Bridge Foundation.
That concludes the items on our agenda. We'll move on to our report. Mr. Manning? Nothing else? Mr. Campbell?
Yes, sir.
Porter? Mr. Robinson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Barnes? Okay, that concludes, Mr. Vittable?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manning?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lattin?
Yes, sir.
That is everything, so we will see you all here next Monday after the report. Anything else you can do?